Mr. Smith, would you please complete us this evening?
I pledge allegiance to the Pledge of Allegiance of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Ms. Lee, if you will call the roll. Mr. Eyre.
Present.
Mr. Boyce.
Present.
Mr. Davis.
Present.
Mr. O'Connor.
Present.
Mr. Peterson.
Here.
Mr. Schwartz. Mr. Smith.
Present.
Mr. Sparts. Ms. Wild.
Present.
Madam President, you have a form. Thank you very much. Mayor Johnson, you have a few people to introduce to us this evening.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the council. It's a pleasure to be with you here on a much-needed rainy evening here in City Hall. I did bring about 25 of my closest friends to join me this evening. I want to introduce you. I'm really proud of the fact about four years ago, my predecessor launched a mayor's youth council. And this is a council that's designed not only to just give simple feedback for things going on in the city, but to start diving in and having deep discussions about where our city is going. I'm sure you, like me, are asked probably on a weekly basis, why do you put yourself through this? Or what do you like about your job? Maybe I'll phrase it a little bit better. But I always answer, not only is Noblesville my hometown, and I care a lot about it, but I also care a lot about where it's going in the future. I have four sets of eyes that stare at me every night and every morning that I want to keep around here long-term. And so I think it's really important that we have conversations with the next generation of leaders. And although I would like to think it wasn't too long ago, it wasn't. It was about 20 years ago that I was in their seats as a senior at Noblesville High School as well. It goes by quickly. And I always appreciate when folks, the next generation, engage those who are up and coming to ask those questions. So we have really enjoyed getting to know each other over the last several months. We have an incredible group here tonight. I want to thank not only them for being engaged, for they meet on Tuesday mornings at 7:30 here at City Hall. And we try to get them loaded up on as much sugar as possible in the morning. So they were here this morning. I started my day with them at 7:30, and we're going to end our evening with them as well. But I want to thank them for their commitment, because that takes a little extra effort to get up and get going, but also to get engaged and to get focused on the issues that they want to get focused on. So again, I want to thank them. I also want to thank their parents for allowing them. I know how important it is to have supportive family at home that allow them to be a part of that, and it's really reflective here tonight. So I'm going to have a chance here in a minute to have each one of them come up. As I introduce them to you, we're going to give them a certificate, then I'm going to ask them to exit out the back, so the council can continue on with their business tonight. So students, when I call your name, if you come forward, I have a certificate for you. We'll take a, and then we'll have you exit to the back. So first off, Tyler Ashby. Where's Tyler at? He's the one that made the big deal about the order we're going on. All right. He had a strong opinion about that this morning. All right, well, Tyler's a great kid, just not here. Next up, I saw this kid, Jack Beers. Where are you, Jack? Come on up. As well as Kate Boyce.
Of course Kate can't be here tonight.
Oh, that's right. Kate is rehearsing for Chicago at this, unlike her father, who's Captain Von Trapp in a musical here shortly, which we're all looking forward to see, Mark Boyce. Elena Smith, president of this year's youth council. She's got the grip and grand, that was good. She's done this before. Leadership right there. Mason's been swimming since 5:00 a.m. this morning. And J.D. If you could give them all another round of applause, I'd appreciate it. Before I wrap up and head out to take some photos with them and let you continue on with their business, I thought I would just really quickly let you know a little bit about what they're focused on. We encourage the youth council to break up into subcommittees to kind of focus on not only issues that our administration is tackling, but issues that they feel are of importance. So they have focused in on four different committees, and the environmental committee, the youth of Noblesville Committee, the mental health committee, and the diversity group. To let you know a little bit about what each one is doing, the environmental committee is currently creating an art installment of an upcycled native planter drawer, Google that, set that has been painted and decorated by NHS Art Club students, which will be located in the South Alley. The members also completed an incredibly successful invasive species removal and partner with the Hamilton County Parks, along with starting plans to work on recycling education. The youth of Noblesville Group is working on organizing a school supply drive for students in need, and they've also been bringing awareness and educating on voter registration in Noblesville High School, something important to all of us here. The mental health committee is working on establishing mental health resources for students in our high school. Obviously, that is a huge pillar of our administration, as well with support from the council. And the diversity group has been in the works of planning a cultural fair for diverse culture clubs in the high school. Big things are also coming to downtown as they work to create a mural designed by Noblesville High School students regarding the rich and diverse history of Noblesville. So I thought it was important to show a little bit about the hands-on things that they are diving into and focused on. Appreciate the council's support. Again, appreciate the parent's support here going forward. It's an honor. I want to thank Michelle Glodowski and the mayor's office. She has been their sponsor and is here every morning with them, getting them going and keeping them focused. But again, I am incredibly excited about the future. It's easy to turn on the TV today and be discouraged about the world which we live in, but spend a few minutes with these guys and gals here in the Noblesville Youth Council, and you'll be really encouraged about the future, not only of our city, state, but our country and nation going forward. So thank you for the time, Madam President. I'm going to sneak outside and eat some cake, I mean, take pictures with them, and we'll be back in shortly, but thank you again for honoring them.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. And parents, you are welcome to exit as well now, too, unless you're really interested in local government, which I will encourage, but...
It actually was wonderful to hear so many voices for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes. I sent four words.
Right?
Where's our flag? We're raising it in crowd.
We will keep moving on with the approval of minutes from the October 11th council retreat.
Moved and approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the October 11th council retreat. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those abstaining? So six in favor, one abstention. Approval of the minutes from the October 11th council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the October 11th council meeting. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Six in favor, one abstention. Mr. Boyce? Okay. Approval of the agenda.
Madam President.
Mr. Smith.
I move that we amend the agenda to consider ordinance number 58-09-22 as a previously discussed ordinance.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to amend the agenda to consider ordinance 58-09-22 as previously discussed. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven zero.
Madam President.
Mr. Smith.
I move that we approve the agenda as amended. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven zero. Thank you very much. Petitions or comments by citizens who are present? I do not have any forms, but if it...
Everyone.
Okay. Would you like to speak now or during the topic of which?
It's not about a particular topic on the agenda, so whatever makes sense to you.
So if you will please approach the podium and give your name and your address, please.
Sure.
Thank you for giving me a few minutes. Chris Tyson is my name. Longtime resident of Noblesville, 21 years-ish. Newly moved to downtown at 1039 Logan Street, the yellow house right next to the subway, since I'm sure everybody's familiar with the subway building over there. Good to orient where I'm at. So the first residential property just west of 10th on Logan. A fellow resident that lives on Logan, about 14th and Logan, Chris Nernberger, was going to be here to speak as well tonight, but had some sick kids and couldn't attend to know. He has communicated with Darren about a few of the issues that we share similarly, so I'm sort of speaking for him and speaking for me myself as well. So again, so I've lived now since March or so on Logan Street, and pretty much from the beginning was pretty concerned with a lot of the traffic speeds there, not only as a resident with the home that fronts the street, but also with kids that go to North Elementary, where we walk to school and then walk downtown and enjoy the... One of the reasons why we moved downtown was to enjoy the amenities, to be able to walk and bike and get, you know, get places very easily. And so having the traffic speeds coming right, you know, and being the first resident, you know, as you cross across on Logan on 10th Street there, see people trying to beat the light both ways all the time. And as everybody knows, with all the really good construction and development going on, that leads to all the side streets, not only on Logan, but also downtown, getting a lot of other traffic as well. So again, not only issues with just kind of the speeding overall in general, but then what's that mean for infrastructure? What's that mean for biking? What's that mean for, you know, walking? And then also, as town grows and we bring in younger people who are going to walk and bike and want to take, you know, advantage of all of the amenities downtown without having to drive and park and deal with all that stuff, right? What's that going to look like in the future? As construction, you know, again, so this is kind of what's going on right now in our current state, as construction's going to keep on, you know, pushing people more and more off of the kind of the main thoroughfare until Pleasant Street can get done, you know, what's that going to look like in the future? So just some things that we've noticed that we have some issues with, some little stuff that we want to put into the public record, Chris and myself. He's lived for a couple of years on Logan Street and has approached the city departments and talked about getting speed studies. We've called down emergency numbers, had police interaction. Have kind of went through the channels and kind of done kind of what we thought, you know, we should from a citizen's standpoint. Haven't gotten very far. Have started to try and take, you know, some of it into our own hands as far as like having... We've got a little green guy with a flag, you know, speeding. Chris has one down his alley as well. So trying to kind of escalate the steps that we feel needed to be safe and kind of help make downtown what we want it to be and why we moved down here, but then also have not gotten much farther. There, you know, found some articles, information from the city of, hey, we've done studies before. Chris has been told we've done speed studies. We're not going to do any more. We've kind of found out this information three years ago, and this is our stance, and kind of sorry but not sorry is what it is. So want to kind of put in the public record that we're trying to take the right steps. Want to take the necessary steps to escalate this and make sure that it's addressed, again, not only for current residents, but as downtown gets younger and as more people come in that are younger that want to bike, walk, right? Little things like was walking the other night and noticed you like physically have to press the button to get the actual like walk signals to initiate, right? So I'm technically breaking the law by not, you know, following, there's no cars around or walking around at night, you know, stuff like that. Happened to notice the other day, coming west to east on Logan from the top of the hill, there's literally no speed limit signs from the top of the hill until you get past my house in the alley. Like zero. And maybe some of that's construction-related, maybe some of it's not. Again, there's a lot of places where the speed limit is posted, some of it's not. Sometimes there's not consistency in downtown, and as now downtown's kind of expanded, right, with a lot of the construction and people are parking off and, again, trying to cut around, just some sort of consistency. And I know there's starting to be a lot of, you know, downtown districts and, you know, a lot of things are starting to get formed around some kind of a formal boundary. Looking to the future, hopefully being able to have, again, safety pedestrian. I know there's some streetscape, you know, that had been discussed in previous administrations. I know there's some things in play, but from a safety standpoint, right, that's kind of like the first concern, but then what's that look like going forward? And again, wanting to kind of formalize the discussion and, like I said, Chris and myself are part of a, you know, kind of just a smaller group of people that have talked, and he's communicated with Darren. There's also been some other discussions with people I know and have heard of on Logan Street about kind of formalizing more of a citizen committee or, you know, a group to kind of come to the city and say, hey, we've got to take some action here. So again, just wanted to kind of formally put in the record, happy to be involved in volunteer time and effort where available, where possible. Any, I know Darren's offered to introduce Chris to some of the people in the city that kind of handle this day-to-day, as opposed to you all handling it, you know, month to month. So looking forward to hopefully continuing some of that discussion, but really feel pretty strongly that it's something that needs to be addressed sooner rather than later before. Again, thankfully, there hasn't been a lot of accidents or pedestrian issues that I've heard of around town, but lots of close calls personally walking around, and I know some others that I personally know that walk and bike have probably felt similar or heard of stories around here. So hopefully, we can get something worked out before it gets any worse, so.
Since you volunteered, I'll go ahead and volunteer for something. We, Mr. Nernberger reached out on Sunday. I have the same concerns. And did a little research, learned quite a bit, talked to Director Canet and Chief Mann about the methodology, and just haven't had a chance to get back to you to share that.
Sure.
So I'll set something up with Chris, and we'll sit down with Director Canet and Chief Mann and go through the methodology and work through that, but your concerns are very valid and want to make sure that you understand that you're not being ignored, but there's a methodology here, and it's hard to trap speeders when you announce you're going to put up a speed trap, but at the same time, we, there's a methodology there that I'm happy to work through with, that I appreciate you coming here tonight.
Yeah, absolutely. And similarly on our side, right? Just even knowledge that there is discussions or there's some form, any transparency into that helps us not go like, gosh, we called and nobody did anything. You're like, you think you're doing stuff, we think nothing's going on, right? We just need to get together and talk. So happy to do that.
And I appreciate you bringing it to our attention, and certainly as downtown continues to grow and expand, we need to be looking at this. So it's, we need, sounds like we need to take a look at it for today, but as you said, four years to come.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much for letting us know.
We've got 770 new apartments, so, you know, we're going to work with engineering and planning to make sure it stays safe and everybody feels comfortable.
Yeah, you know, it's like, if you're inviting the people that like to bike and walk, you need to make sure to have the infrastructure and things in place to let them bike and walk, right? Or else it's going to be a disconnect. So looking forward to talking with you. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Welcome to town, too, by the way.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Any other petitions or comments by citizens who are present? Seeing none, we will move on to council committee reports, and I believe our only report for this evening is from Mr. Davis and the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Madam President. We met October 20th. Greg O'Connor, Darren Peterson, Aaron Smith, and myself. Andrew Murray discussed with us economic development area of River West. Matt Light talked about the 2023 salary ordinance amendment for the city employees. Jess Spalding discussed the high-assess value levy growth appeal update, and also the Pleasant Street financing update. That and the claims come to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Madam President.
Mr. Smith.
I move that we approve the claims. Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the claims as presented. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven zero. Thank you very much. Previously discussed ordinances. Council to consider ordinance number 21-04-22A and ordinance amending ordinance 21-04-22, changes to the civilian employee personnel policy handbook. Ms. Ramon.
Good evening. Holly Ramon, Human Resources Director. As we discussed at our last meeting, there were just two small revisions to Section 4.21 under longevity benefits. The civilian longevity pay will now match that of sworn personnel for year one through 19. And then under Section 4.3, the floating holidays, with the approval of the 2023 holiday schedule, we needed to revise this section. Previously, it stated four floating holidays were given, and for 2023, we'll have five. So we removed the quantity and just explained that it would be as approved by the Board of Works. And I'm happy to answer any questions for you.
Any questions, Mrs. Ramon?
Madam President.
Mr. Smith.
I move that we approve ordinance number 21-04-22A. Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 21-04-22A. This is a roll call vote. Ms. Lee. Mr. Eyre.
Aye.
Mr. Boyce.
Aye.
Mr. Davis. Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Wild?
Aye.
Seven aye, zero nay, the ordinance is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council to consider ordinance number 58-09-22, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of the City of Noblesville, Indiana, taxable economic development revenue bonds, Series A and B, and authorizing and approving other actions in respect thereto as amended. Ms. Smith?
Good evening. This ordinance was introduced at the September 27th council meeting and authorizes the issuance of bonds pursuant to the economic development agreement for the Midland Point project. Bonds will be for an amount not to exceed 13 million and purchased by the developers. Since the introduction, there have been no substantive changes. There was a Scrivener's error on Page 3, Item 4 of the ordinance. The interest rate was written as 6%, but it has been corrected to read as 8%. Jim Adams, the developer, and his counsel Lisa Lee are in the audience, and we, I myself and them, are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Any questions of Mr. Smith? Any questions of the petitioner?
Madam President?
Mr. Smith?
I move that we amend ordinance 58-09-22 as presented.
Second?
It has been moved and seconded to amend ordinance number 58-09-22 as presented. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven zero.
Madam President?
Mr. Smith?
I move that we approve ordinance number 58-09-22 as amended.
Second?
It has been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 58-09-22 as amended. This is a roll call vote. Ms. Lee's. Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Air?
Aye.
Ms. Wild?
Aye.
Seven aye, zero nay, the ordinance is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Council to consider ordinance number 63-10-22, a salary ordinance for appointed officials and employees of the City of Noblesville for 2023 as amended. Mrs. Ramon?
Holly Ramon, Human Resources Director. As presented during our last meeting, the ordinance includes the cost of living adjustments as was presented during our review process during the budget process. And on Thursday's Finance Committee meeting, Matt Light also reviewed with the Finance Meeting or Committee Meeting members the, a few revisions to the salary ordinance, and those are before you. And just a brief explanation of what those are. Under the Planning Department, the principal planner position was added to replace one of the senior planner positions. The FLSA status for this position will be exempt, and the position grade increase will be from a 38 to a 40. Under Section 3, excuse me, the language was updated to remove bonus and add stipend. Under Section 6, the Redevelopment Commission, RDC, was added to this section, and language was added to clarify the payment per meeting for those members and the Plan Commission meeting, or members as well. And under Section 12, that's a new section. This was added to allow employees who are working night shift for snow removal to have a dollar more per shift per hour. This was discussed during your budget meeting with the Street Department, but unfortunately was missed at our last first reading. And then, under Section 13, this section was added to provide a 50 cents shift differential for employees of utilities who are working second and third shift. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions of Mrs. Ramon?
In Finance, you said that for the utility one, that will be incorporated into their budget as presented.
Yes, it will.
Madam President?
Mr. O'Connor?
I think we need to amend 63-10-22 to accept these changes. I'll make that motion.
Second?
It has been moved and seconded to amend ordinance 63-10-22 as presented. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven zero.
Madam President?
Mr. O'Connor?
I move we approve ordinance 63-10-22 as amended.
Second?
It has been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 63-10-22 as amended. This is a roll call vote. Ms. Lee's. Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Air?
Aye.
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Ms. Wild?
Aye.
Seven aye, zero nay, the ordinance is approved.
Thank you.
Council to consider ordinance number 64-10-22, a salary ordinance for elected officials for the City of Noblesville for 2023. Mr. Light?
Thank you, President Wild, members of the council. In front of you is the salary ordinance, the annual salary ordinance for elected officials, which is adopted separate from the salary ordinance for employees because it's subject to some different requirements and restrictions by state statute. As was indicated at the last meeting, the changes for mayor, judge, and council are similar to the cost of living changes for all city employees. It was included in the city, in the council-passed budget. And the change for the clerk is based on the first-person salary study and comparison of the duties of that function in relation to other cities of a similar size. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Light?
Madam President?
Mr. O'Connor?
I would move we approve ordinance 64-10-22 as presented.
Second?
It has been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 64-10-22 as presented. This is a roll call vote. Ms. Lee's. Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Air?
Aye.
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Wild?
Aye.
Seven aye, zero nay, the ordinance is approved. Thank you. We will move on to proposed development presentation. Council to hear introductory information for proposed residential plan development on approximately 27.5 acres, containing 47 paired villas, 94 units attached, single-family, and the 7,500 to 7,600 block of East 196th Street north side behind the existing homes and west of Hague Road to be known as Retreat at Morris. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the council. I'm the record, Andy Wirtland, he's professional with the law firm Church Churchill in Antrim, with offices at 209th Street here in Noblesville. Here tonight on behalf of our client, Apollo Developers. With me in the audience is Neil Garotti and Ben Hamilton of Apollo. You know these guys from quality residential projects that they've brought to Noblesville. Trailside Woods, Shafer Woods, and under development currently is Maryland Woods at Maryland Road and 141st Street. Also with us is property owner Darren Radcliffe. Where before you this evening, introduce the Retreat at Morris, 27 and a half acres at the northwest quadrant of 196th and Hague Road, owned by the Gordon family. We're proposing 94 units of paired villa homes to be built by Beazer Homes. Council, I'm sure, is familiar with the Miller's Walk development. It's that product that we're proposing here for this location. This, in many ways, is an infill project. To the north, we have Feather Cove, very similar residential product of paired patio homes. It was built about 20 years ago. To the east are single-family homes, and across the street, Noblesville School's transportation facility. South, more single-family homes, and west is an agricultural field. We like this site for several reasons, but mostly it has to do with the location. It's very walkable to Morris Park and Beach. And while that connectivity to the area is important, we try to be sensitive to the neighbors, along Hague, primarily along Hague and 196. We are providing mounding and a pond as a buffer between our community and the existing homes. And on the perimeter, it is our intent to preserve the mature trees that do exist to enhance that transition area. We are planning to offer an amenity area to that, the northwest portion of the property. There will be a walking trail back there and a, as well as a pickleball court. We spent a considerable amount of time with the planning and engineering departments on the best way to lay this out, met with Mayor Jensen, met with the Architectural Review Board last week. We'll be making some minor changes to one of the building elevations. Also met with the Technical Advisory Committee. Comments from that meeting, I would say, were minor, given that this is a preliminary plan at this point. This land is currently outside of city limits. It is adjacent on the north and west sides. So, should you see fit to approve our zoning petition, we expect to see an annexation request followed shortly. We have a development that we're quite proud to present tonight. We're anxious to hear your thoughts and receive your feedback. I just want to close by saying that in 2016, the city commissioned Green Street to prepare a housing study. That study identified a missing middle component in the Noblesville housing stock. Since that study came out, it's been interesting to see how the city and the development community have embraced that notion and worked towards meeting that market demand. We believe that this product fits hand in glove in that squarely into that product segment. Also, don't want to understate this, the Gordon family are the applicants. They are committed to this being a quality project, worthy of a high reputation of the Harbors area. The Gordons have been good for Noblesville. They all choose to live here and keep their businesses here. Dick Gordon, of course, big advocate for the Bridge of Flowers. They've been purchasing land in this area for some time to improve this part of the city. I'm going to conclude my introduction here and let you ask questions. Our team will be happy to answer them.
Any questions of Mr. Wirt? Comments?
Madam President?
Mr. O'Connor?
Andy, who owns the, it looks like a barn structure just north?
That's owned by the Gordon family.
Okay. I just wondered who the property owner was there. And how many pickleball courts were you gonna put in?
Not enough.
Not enough?
I told you there's gonna be a numbers question.
One?
Just one.
Hmm. That might be problematic. We start playing round robin.
Well, maybe over at Morris Park and Beach, it can be. Some courts.
Is the detention pond, will that be wet?
I believe so, yes.
Be a water feature in it? Five?
That's not a fountain.
Oh, one, okay.
A fountain. Five for that small thing.
Five might, five coins in a fountain, that's a song.
Could be Las Vegas over there with five fountains. Yeah, that's small.
Keep the narration going.
No, I think this is a good infill project. It, you know, the duplex, the villas, excuse me, seem to be popular. And if it's similar to the Miller's Walk product, that's gone reasonably well. So, I don't know, I don't see anything here that gives me any heartburn from a design perspective. The buffer's nice. Have you heard anything from the neighbors?
We have not yet.
Have you had a neighbor meeting yet?
We haven't had one just yet.
Probably be a good idea, just so they...
Yeah, I think so.
Know what's coming, but that's all I had.
Thank you. Anyone else?
We saw that the ARV needing it's an attractive product. My neighbors own the field to the west of that. Be interested in what that's here, what they have to say. That's all I know, the field that's there.
I'll echo Mr. O'Connor's comments, and I think it's a good infill project. It seems to fit certainly in that area of the city, so. Hearing no other comments, we will see you later on in the process.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you all very much. Misses and ladies, item number one, council to consider resolution RC-48-22, a resolution approving an economic development agreement with South Broad Ripple Brewing Company LLC. Mr. Haberman?
Good evening. Thank you. Everybody may be more familiar with the business known as Brew Beer Brewery. They are also known as South Broad Ripple Brewing Company. They have decided to make Noblesville their next location, and we're pretty excited about that. They intend to build roughly 6,000 square foot taproom and extensive outdoor kind of destination on the south side of Noblesville on South 10th Street, just north of the Highway Department. And we're pretty excited about that being one of the first developments in that part of town in recent history. And so, we're gonna help them make that happen. So, we're gonna do that in the form of some infrastructure improvements. And in fact, it's really just a savings to the company. That was a project that the Engineering Department had intended to do in that part of town anyway. And so, we're gonna bump that up, and we show that in the memo that I... That you have in front of you as a value of $50,000, which is an estimate. And then, we're also going to issue a $50,000 grant and offer them some fee waivers, some administrative fee waivers. But the project will be, will start in the spring, and they intend it to be a pretty quick project. But as I said, it's gonna be a pretty neat project in that part of town, hopefully to spark some more development along South 10th Street. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have regarding the project.
Any questions of Mr. Haberman? Mr. Peterson?
I'm just glad to say that that part of town has been a mess, drainage mess. And I'm glad to see that this investment's being made, and it's gonna start to, it's not just about this project, but this hopefully will cause an economic boom down there that's, it's needed, these improvements. So, thank you.
Yeah, along with a lot of the other improvements there on the roadway and the paths and the trails, there's some, working with their site plan to make it happen. So, we announced it a few months ago, but we're finally getting across the finish line.
Hundred percent. I think, you know, just to echo Mr. Tyson's comments earlier, this lends itself to the pedestrian connectivity and the bike connectivity, and it shows that when we make an investment, that follows as well. And so, I know this has all been in the works for a while, but I think that this will breed more development in that area, which will be great.
I would echo both of those comments. I think it's been a long time since we've put any money in that area. It is a gateway to the city, and I think this will help spur on some new development and bring in some new creativity, and so it'll be a positive move in the right direction.
So, would any of you like to make a motion?
So, with that, I'll make a motion to approve resolution RC-48-22.
Second?
It has been moved and seconded to approve resolution RC-48-22 as presented. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven zero. Thank you very much. Council to consider resolution RC-50-22, a resolution approving, one, a declaratory resolution and economic development plan of the Redevelopment Commission establishing the 146th Street River Road Economic Development Area, and, two, the order of the Plan Commission related thereto River West. Mrs. Smith?
Good evening again. This resolution is the next step in carrying out the commitments for the economic development agreement for the River West Project with Mill House. As a reminder, this project redevelops real estate located at the northwest corner of 146th Street and River Road into a 46-acre master planned mixed-use development. The project includes approximately 104, for sale townhomes, 324 market-rate apartments, and 145 restricted age market-rate apartments, and up to 30,000 square feet of commercial retail space. This resolution establishes the 146th Street Road, sorry, 146th Street River Road Economic Development Area and allocation areas. There will be three allocation areas within this economic development area, one for the age-restricted units, one for the multifamily units, and the other for the commercial retail area. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions of Mrs. Smith?
Madam President?
Mr. Smith?
I move to approve resolution RC-50-22.
Second?
It has been moved and seconded to approve resolution RC-50-22 as presented. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven zero. Thank you very much.[1768.31]
Thank you.
Next is council comments. Yes, Mr. Air.
I would like to thank the mayor and his staff for all the work they're doing with our youth and our community. I just think it's great that he has that much participation. Maybe he has a waiting list, I don't know. But it's nice to see that young people in the community have a true interest in what's going on at City Hall and in our community.
Was it cake?
How was it?
It's a real such a big as bad cake.
Oh, thank you.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Mayor, who are you going?
I was just going to mention, Madam President, sorry, I meant to mention it earlier, but I was focused on the youth council. But there are a lot of construction projects going on around the City of Noblesville, which is incredibly exciting. There's a lot of moving pieces with that. I would just encourage everyone to stay tuned to our social media pages. You know, we do it once a week, Friday at 5:00 on the mayor's, on the city Facebook page with a lot of good information. We are doing our best to communicate as much, you know, to you all as well. We're not perfect, but we're doing a heck of a job trying to make sure we get the message out about different road closures. But I think over the next, you know, probably 30 to 60 days, you're going to see a lot of things open up and be completed, which is really exciting. But I just would ask folks patience in this process and to reach out directly to us at City Hall or to you as the council or to me with my, and my numbers pretty well published as well. So we're trying to communicate as well as possible, but there are a lot of great enhancements happening all over the city. And that takes just a little bit of time and a little inconvenience. So just wanted to encourage folks to tune in and ask us questions directly if we can help you as the council or anyone watching it or any citizens as well.
Thank you. Anything else? I will remind everyone that the next council meeting is Wednesday, November 9th, because Tuesday, the 8th, is election day. So we will have our council meeting on Wednesday, November 9th. With that.
Forget to vote.
Yeah, don't, yeah, please don't forget to vote. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.